Thanks for the, thanks for the warning.
I was in Lansing, Michigan. I was on a waitlist for two years. Allegedly, his dad was a professor, not at university, but somewhere around there. But I mean, he was, as long as his parents were professors and former professors.
Yes, I'm responsible for statistics all over the state though for 2024. So it is very difficult to find.
Yeah. She's a smart kid. He seemed pretty sharp.
I'm okay until they start $30 on something.
Welcome to the Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of Martinsville Board of Works and Safety, meeting is hereby called before. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of Martinsville Common Council, meeting is hereby called before. Mr. Merida, would you please call a roll?
John Badger.
President.
Susie Lips.
President.
Ben Mayhem.
President.
Josh Farren.
Josh is six.
Ann Miller. Phil Deckard Senior.
President.
Phil Deckard is the second.
President.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. This time, I would like to invite Pastor Jason Abney from the Light of Love Ministries to come forward with tonight's invocation. So do you please stand or remain standing for our pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor, for having me. We just bow our heads. Father, we just come to you tonight. We just thank you, Lord, for your blessings upon us. We thank you for this great city of Martinsville, Indiana. Father, we just thank you for our great leaders, ones that are here tonight, that are the ones that are out working in the streets, God. We just glorify you for them. Lord, we ask that you would bless twenty twenty-five, this year, Lord, that you would bless us abundantly, Lord, that you would put your hand to everything we do. And, God, you would help our leaders to make the decisions that make this an even better city, an even greater city. Father, we give you all the praise and all the glory for the meeting tonight, for all the decisions made, for all the honors tonight. We give it all to you. We give you all the light, in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You each received copies of the minutes from the Monday, December twenty-third meeting, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as stated.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Merida, you have a report you would like to give?
Yes, good evening, council. Just want to give you a monthly update. We've updated our website once again with the monthly budget updates. We have also uploaded the twenty twenty-five budget to the website. That way, the public can have a view of that. We've also just recently updated our interest made. Happy to report that for the year twenty twenty-four, the city was able to grow their cash by five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in interest alone, by far than most of the city has made in a one-year period. We are currently in the process of closing the year twenty twenty-four and opening the year twenty twenty-five in Gateway, plan to have that submitted to Gateway by the end of this month, which will be about two months ahead of schedule. We are anticipating an early audit season, just based upon past experience. Also happy to report that our bond that we've talked to you all about has been closed. So your bond, your sewer utility is now debt-free, and we're able to pay that off a year early. We will also be hosting a workshop sometime in April at our facilities. I'll be sending you an invitation, and it will also be open to the public. The, the thought behind that is to have a workshop that will explain appropriations, budgets, just basic information if anybody wants to come and, and ask questions freely about the budget and finances, so.
Who's facilitating that workshop?
That will be at our office. We'll be facilitating that.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Merida? Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Thanks for the wonderful job. Chief Green?
Good evening, council. Good evening, everyone else in the crowd. Have good news. We have two new fire trucks sitting in the bay. It's only taken us a couple of days to get them. Things look really good with those. Before I get started on the annual report, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Charlie Fraker, the Fire Marshal, who always puts his stuff together for us. Every year, he does a really nice job. He changed up some pictures this year. We changed up a few things. The biggest thing that we saw going forward, and I'm going to keep this pretty short because you have the packet, you can look at it, feel free to give me a call at any time. Our run load was down a little bit this year, about two hundred and eighty runs. The one thing that we have noticed in years past, we always increased incrementally, at least by a few runs every year, sometimes maybe a hundred. This year, we were down. We were down in the fire category. From twenty-three, we were ninety-one, and twenty-four, we're sixty-nine. So that's a good thing. The unfortunate part, as we go through and look at some of these things, is that we had a few more fatalities this year than in years past. And so with that, takes an exceptionally long time to investigate those things, and it keeps Charlie on his toes. There's hours and hours and hours of work that's involved in that. There's other people in this room, too, that are involved in those investigations, and we appreciate all those people. If you look real quick, the busiest shift again this year was A shift, and Captain Correa probably loves that because he likes to say he never has time for anything, but we were down on some runs this year, so that's pretty good. Last year, we had the busiest day of the year, was Monday. This year happened to be Friday. So we never have a, a good reason as to why things happen. Busiest month this year was in May. Last year was in November. And so I take that back, last year, yeah, last year was in November. Busiest hours of the day, last year, we were about one o'clock to two o'clock, and this year, we are four to five P.M. You can see some various pictures through there that we have put together, that have been taken, a lot of different things going on. I know that you can see some pictures in here of wildfire, pictures on the on-scene photos. I just want to thank all those people that are out west fighting fire right now because those are some real fires. The stuff we get to see are real, but they're nothing licking up your hind end or taking out cities like they are there, so our thoughts and prayers are with all them. Train division this year, happy to say that very soon, by April one, we will have a training facility that will be up and operational as far as the non-burn side, and we're really happy about that. So all those containers that were finally welded together, we have roof put on it, the inside is looking really good, have a crew of people working on that, they're doing a great job. You can look at the total man-hours that have been put into the different training, whether it's fire, EMS, special operations, officer development administratively. And then you get back here a little bit further to the inspections, and, and I want to take a little bit of time on this one, not, not too much, but on the site visits this past year, Charlie did eight more inspection, or site visits, did fourteen more annual inspections, and his re-inspections were down. Re-inspection, that's a good thing. That means that these people are starting to follow the directions that he's giving them. I know that in the past, you know, it's been really hard to get people to do the things they need to do. He works with them, takes good care of those people. Investigations, he was, he was up on accidentals, but again, we had three fatalities this year. And again, that just, that takes a lot of, a lot of time and man-hours to go into that. The public education presentations on the miscellaneous portion of it was doubled, so that means he's getting out and educating people, which in turn, you can see that some of these things are happening. We're having a little bit better success on getting people out and trying to work on their site visits and things like that. So education's really important, so they understand the reasons why he's doing what he's doing. This past year showed us a lot of different things, from car wrecks to house fires, and then probably one of the fun things that we got to do this past year for us was the Christmas parade, decorating the fire truck like we did. That was a lot of fun. And then the nine eleven ceremony is always something that we encourage the public to come out to and, and participate in. On the last two pages, if you see, we included two of our members that took the last call, Hewitt Mills and Joseph Friends. And so we want to thank their families at this time for their, you know, dedication and, and hard work to the Fire Department and the city of Martinsville. So if you have any questions, I know we have a lot on the agenda tonight.
Chief Green, I just want to say thank you for your graphics and the report content. Your annual Fire Department reports, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
Delegation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief Green, you want to stay up? We'll swing a couple. Any fire?
All right, Billy. So Billy Bias comes to us with a long history of family in the fire service. His dad retired as a captain with Martinsville Fire Department several years ago, has extinguisher crow here locally in Martinsville, and his mother, Dawn, she's been a paramedic and is also a paid standby member of the Martinsville Fire Department. I think she worked in her twenty-second year as a paid standby member. Keith, how long were you on? Forever, I know, but.
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. So he comes with a long history of this. He, he's the guy that, he likes to follow everything he's told to do, he's a great guy. He's a guy working, he's been in this for a long time, and we're glad to have him here, so.
Billy, do you have him? Keith, do you want to come up?
Dawn versus Tanya. Come on up.
I'll let you. If they should left hand on the microphone, raise your hand. I know bias. Your vice chair. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances, policies, and resolutions.
And the ordinances, policies, and resolutions.
And the city of Martinsville.
And the city of Martinsville.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially uphold.
And impartially uphold.
And discharge my duties.
And discharge my duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
As a firefighter. For the city of Martinsville Fire Department.
For the city of Martinsville Fire Department.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
While we're waiting, the next one that we have coming up, Travis Jarrett, his wife, Rihanna, correct? Come on up. We let Billy go first so you could hear everything. This is the hardest thing you'll have to do in the fire service. Have to come down here. Normally, there's nobody here, you don't have to wait. I know, but I don't know, it's going to be to see you. Okay?
If you, if you'll raise your left hand, raise your right. I, Travis Jarrett, your vice chair.
Your vice chair.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Indiana.
Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the ordinances, policies, and resolutions.
And the ordinances, policies, and resolutions.
And the city of Martinsville.
And the city of Martinsville.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially uphold.
And impartially uphold.
And discharge my duties.
And discharge my duties.
And responsibilities.
And responsibilities.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
For the city of Martinsville Fire Department.
For the city of Martinsville Fire Department.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So we got.
Well, Travis, filling this out, I would like to take this time to thank all the firefighters that are in the room. Without them, doing the job that they do every day, even though we are down a few runs this year, I'm sure we'll be up next year. But thank you, all of you that are here, all those that, that are out here still protecting police and sheriff. We do appreciate we all work really well together, so thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Deputy Chief Austin Combs. He didn't show.
He, he was back there.
Wait on Ryan to get back up there, too.
Chief, you want to come up with us?
You don't need a voice, mom.
Maybe not. He's asked me all day while I'm staying, so I made up some sins to tell him. Ryan's downstairs helping Tanya. Wrote a little speech. Hopefully, all the information's accurate. It was given to me, so. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed colleagues, family, and friends. Today, we have the distinct honor of celebrating a career that has spanned over five decades, a career marked by unwavering dedication, service, and leadership in law enforcement. We are here to recognize Chief Rick Lang for an extraordinary fifty years of service and to reflect on the immense impact he's had on both the profession and communities he's served. Starting in nineteen seventy-four, Rick's journey in law enforcement began as a civilian with the FBI in Washington, D.C. From there, Lang returned to Indiana in nineteen seventy-six and began working for the Indiana State Police as a civilian. In nineteen seventy-eight, Lang applied for and was accepted into the thirty-fifth recruit class for the Indiana State Police, where he ultimately became one of Indiana's finest, an Indiana State Trooper. Over the years, Lang moved through the ranks of the Indiana State Police, serving in various key roles, including a trooper, investigator, district investigative coordinator. He also served as a field detective and later the investigative squad leader, always adapting to the changing needs of law enforcement while maintaining an unshakable commitment to the safety and well-being of the community. In addition to his work with the Indiana State Police, Rick also held positions that served to further benefit the public, including working part-time as a home detention officer for, with Morgan County Court Services and as an investigator with Hendricks County Prosecutor's Office. Lang's leadership and expertise were recognized when he became the Chief of Police for Martinsville Police Department in twenty sixteen, a role that was shortened tenure but left a positive impression for the officers with him. Even in retirement, which you've felt how many times now?
I watched five.
Lang remained committed to justice, serving as a de entry officer for Morgan County Court Services and returning as an investigator with the Hendricks County Prosecutor's Office, continuing to make a difference in the lives of those they served. He served, sorry. In June two thousand twenty-two, after a long and distinguished career, Lang finally retired, I put them in quotes. But there, that was not the end of his story. In November of two thousand twenty-three, he was appointed as the Chief of Police of the Martinsville Police Department once again, proving that his dedication to public service is far from over. Fifty years of law enforcement experience is a remarkable achievement. Through every position, every case, every challenge faced, Lang has demonstrated resilience, integrity, and unyielding passion for justice. His leadership has touched the lives of many, and his service has left an indelible mark on the communities he worked so hard to protect. Chief Rick Lang, thank you for your decades of service, for your leadership, and for the countless lives you've touched along the way. You set the standard for professionalism, compassion, and unwavering dedication in the field of law enforcement, and for the new face of the Martinsville Police Department. Your legacy is one of excellence, and we are all fortunate to have you as a role model and mentor. On behalf of everyone here, congratulations on this monumental achievement of fifty years in law enforcement. We honor your service and thank you for all you've done and continue to do. Here's your outstanding career and the positive impact you've made. Thank you.
Four years, if you've got any words.
I couldn't find another job. Well, after following Chief Green so eloquently talk about the Fire Department and what a good job they do, and I'm standing up there talking about me, that's just not right. You know, because it's the police department, and our officers here and our civilians that work for the police department, they make our police department great, and it is a great police department. I'm totally speechless. You know, I did not expect this. Don't know what to say. But I am retiring.
In about three years.
I would like to really especially thank Jerry Burleson for writing it. But now, I, I really don't know what to say, but, but I, I've watched the faces come into this room, the people that I love. You know, and, and one of my favorite scriptures is when Jesus was asked, what is the greatest commandment? To love your God with all your heart, with all your mind, with all your soul. And the second is liking. So to love your neighbor as yourself. And on these two commandments, all the laws of the prophets rest, Matthew twenty-two. And I've tried to love. That's a tall, to love everyone. You know, and especially doing this job. You know, it's, I, I guess you could say it's an act of love and force the law. I don't know, a lot of people say that's a stretch, Rick. But I, I do love everyone here, and, and thank you so much. And that scripture is so true because I feel the warmth in this room. Faces I haven't seen in a while, you know, and I'm so glad to see them. Nineteen seventy-four, I never thought I would ever be standing here saying that I've got fifty years in this business, you know, and I tell everybody when I started, I was six-four. But thank you to the mayor that called me. Thank you to the council that supports me and our department. We want to do our best to support the city of Martinsville, to make it grow in a way that hasn't been maybe seen in a while. Well, I think we're all impressive as of that. We've got good leadership in this, in this city and in this county, and we're so lucky to enjoy the support that we get from citizens right here in Martinsville and throughout the county. Being a fireman, my brother over there, he raised his hand. That's you. He's the fireman of the family, you know, and I come from a, a family that, that is dedicated to service. They're, they're in the military. My son-in-law's in the military. My daughter right over there at probation, she works with chupinons. You know, it's, it's a service-oriented family, and I think, you know, I think it was Mother Teresa that said, one, she said, if you really want to change the world, go home and love your family, you know, and, and another one she said was, the only life worth living is the life lived for others. And that's what we do, and we're so fortunate to be able to do that. But I'm even more fortunate to call you all my friends, and I love you and thank you very much.
I've known Rick Lang more than anybody. I've known him more than some of you have been born. Forty-seven years. Prosecutor, ended my prosecutor year, and all my judges. For every police officer that's in this room, a tag- attach yourself to the hip of this man and follow him and learn everything that you can from him. You can't learn everything that he knows. Cause he knows more than all of us, I'll comment. I've been a judge full and part-time for forty-two years. I retire. I'm dead. Every time we had a case come for me and I saw the name Rick Lang attached to it, I knew that we were going to have a successful trial. Cause this man knows how to do it. He took the John Behring case and literally slipped, ate, went to the bathroom with it, whatever, until it was done right. I had the opportunity to review it after the trial and the Supreme Court upheld this man's work in bringing that man to justice. Wasn't the only one. We've had too many, um, that we don't want to talk about. But I wanted to talk about this man. This is tough. Every once in a while, I'll drop in down here just to see how he's doing, make sure what's going on. I've known him so long, Mary's here somewhere, isn't she? There she is. I even adopted her daughter to him in court. One of the best honors I ever had. And I didn't prepare anything, but I'd just like to talk. Friend, this is very important. Let's keep it going.
Chief Lang, I understand there is a private reception for you somewhere downstairs.
Downstairs.
And so if you and your guests would like to head down there, we'll carry on in our meeting.
You do that.
I, I won't do it correctly.
And if the firemen want to go ahead and leave too, we understand, go ahead, Connor.
Quite an evening. At this time, I have asked Mac Porter to come up and go over some concrete procedures. As you've noticed, the camera in the back, some things are going to be changing on, uh, our council meetings. June first, July first, July first, where everything's going to be livestreamed. So we want to just go over, you know, procedures on what we should be doing in our meetings. So back within the next few months will help us get in line, get used to doing things correctly. Mr. Porter?
Now, before I get into what I've been asked to do, at the last meeting, the mayor very graciously gave me credit for the owner-occupied rehabilitation grant. But I want to say that if it wasn't for the data that Gary supplied and Ben and his staff provided and the excellent work of submitting the application by the Administrative Resource Association, our partner, that grant would not have happened and I want to make sure they get the credit as well due to them and not just me because it was a team effort, not, not just me. Also wanted to let you know that Pastor Dabney was selected this evening to give the invocation for a very specific reason. He and members of his congregation and members with Jeff Floyd and his congregation come into this room every Thursday morning just before eight o'clock. And they go around to each seat in this room where you sit and they have prayer for you. And it's important for you to be aware of that, but I wanted you to know that you're thought of every week in this room, even though you're not in this room, uh, by Pastor Dabney and, and his team and, and Jeff Floyd and his team. Now, uh, as we look to July twenty-five, as the mayor stated, um, and that's when all public meetings will have to be livestreamed. So we're going to be working over the next few weeks to get all of our boards and all of our commissions in alignment with what the statutes are for, uh, those livestream meetings. And one of the most important things, and that's why we're starting now, is to get you in the habit of doing some of these things. And, and probably the key thing is to speak into the microphone. Because the folks at home cannot hear you if you're not speaking into the microphone, if it be to voice your vote, if it be to make a motion, if it be to make a second, to ask a question. So please, don't sit back in your chairs when you want to speak, speak into the microphone because it's, uh, something that really is important. We've, we've talked a little bit about it before, but when you state a motion, you need to clearly state the motion. So moved is not a clear motion. In fact, it's not a motion at all. Um, and so we're not going to recognize that. You need to state the motion. Roberts Rules, which was adopted in nineteen fifty-three by the council to be the parliamentary rules, parliamentary law for the council and all city meetings, uh, states in section one, uh, I'm sorry, ten dot, uh, nine, if a main motion is adopted, it becomes the officially recorded statement of action and taken by the assembly. A motion should therefore state in a concise, unambiguous and complete form, appropriate for such a purpose. That means if you're going to make a motion, state what the motion is. I make a motion, I'd like to move that we adopt the minutes from the September, whatever meeting as presented. Those same, that same motion then is to be recorded that way in the, in the minutes. Making a motion brings the item to the floor. It does not necessarily mean that you're in favor of the motion or if you second it, that does not mean you're in favor of the motion. What it means is you want to have a discussion or a debate on that motion. And then even though you may have presented the motion to approve or whatever, does not mean you have to vote that way. All your, your motion does is bring it to the floor for consideration. Somehow I got a blank page in there. From time to time, we have a roll call vote. Procedures for a roll call vote as prescribed by Roberts Rules of Order in section forty-five, subsection forty-eight through fifty-one, states a roll call is in alphabetical order except that the presiding officer whose, uh, name is called last and only when his vote will affect the result. If a member does not wish to vote, he or she answers present or abstain. If he or she is not ready to vote, but wishes to be called on again after the roll has been completely called the first time, they answer pass. The clerk repeats each member's name and answers aloud, uh, as given and notes those answers in the minutes. For example, if he were to call my name and I would vote yea, then he would repeat back, Mr. Porter votes yea. At the conclusion of the roll call, the names of those who failed to answer will be called again. And then the clerk gives the final numbers of the voting on each side and the number of answering present to the chair, the mayor, who announces the figures and declares the results of the vote. Additionally, under Indiana Open Door Law, IC five fourteen dash one point five to two C, members of the governing body commits an open door violation if the gatherings attended by at least a quorum of the members present. This includes, um, gatherings that may take place at the conclusion of a council meeting or, uh, non-social gathering. Even though it, even though no official business maybe is received, deliberated or recommended or discussed in those gatherings, such a gathering could be construed as a meeting where a quorum was present. Please keep this in mind that such gatherings could be reported to the public access counselor and could be sub- subject you and the city to fines based on what the public access counselor. So we want you to avoid being fined by the state. My role is as the, as the parliamentarian is not to be the procedure police. However, as the mayor stated, stated over the next few weeks, I'm going to be trying to coach you to get you into the process of what we need to be doing. So as we get to July, we're in compliance with the statute that requires, um, livestream meetings.
Any questions for Mr. Porter? Thank you, Mac. First item in the business tonight is the election of President Pro Tem of the council. As it says in statute, it's regular first meeting under section seven of this chapter, uh, chapter each sixth of January, a legislative body shall choose from its members the President Pro Tem to preside whenever the executive myself, mayor, is absent. So at this time, I open nominations up for President Pro Tem.
I make a motion that Phil Deckard Second be President Pro Tem for twenty twenty-five.
Second.
A motion being seconded for Phil Deckard Second. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that only one candidate was nominated, the chair now declares Phil Deckard Second as President Pro Tem for the coming year. Congratulations.
Thank you, council. I appreciate that and the support and confidence you have. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda here, uh, each year, the council needs to name appointments to various boards and commissions. Tonight, the council needs to name its appropriate positions to the planning commission, the redevelopment commission, Morgan County Economic Development Corporation, Corporation of Board Directors. On the planning commission now, Councilwoman Miller is on that. The redevelopment commission, uh, Councilman Phil Deckard Senior. And for the Morgan County Economic Development Corporation, Councilwoman Mayhem. So any discussion or nominations? Do the ones that are in those positions want to just remain there? What's, what's the will of the council?
Mayor, do those have to be separately or?
I think we can do them all together.
I'll make the motion to keep those serving the same for the twenty twenty-five year.
I second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to remain the appointments to the, uh, appropriate commissions as they were in twenty twenty-four for the coming year, twenty twenty-five. Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Question carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration of how to move forward regarding municipal buildings. Mr. Merida?
Sorry, can't write and talk at the same time, I guess. Um, so we've been talking about this for quite a while. Uh, we've talked about leasing, building, renovating, uh, buying. I know in your packet you have three or four options. We want to get before the council to kind of get some guidance from you on how you would like to move forward. If there's anything that you want to investigate further or if you want to get any, any more information.
I'd like to make a motion that the council discuss having the clerk and the clerk staff move to City Hall with appropriate adjustments made once the current occupants of lease are in their new structure. Just want to have that discussion, a motion to discuss.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
An action made and seconded to open up discussion for moving the city clerk. Looking at City Hall after the police leave, that's kind of a condensed version of what I said, so, uh, any comments? Questions?
And a, and a dent up to that discussion also then to keep the water staff where the water staff currently is in that structure. If I can amend my motion. It's really twofold.
Mr. Mayor, my mayor.
Sure.
Can we bring it up to date on some other things you may not be aware of? Now, back then, November two thousand nineteen, two months before this administration period, they received a DLZ recommending different options to be considered. This administration over the past year has met with Strasser, a contractor out of Wilmington, has an architect there. We've worked with the same architect Ben's worked with, uh, uh, Ark on both the pump house at the Labey and foundations buildings over here. I've been working with the historic society on another option altogether, your packet says reimagine. And what I have proposed and what I've proposed to the historic society is removal of the fireplace, of the fire department bays that ran into the building. They're not original, the building, they're not historic in the same nature. We have an exterior wall that identifies what this building truly is that separates it from those fire department bays. I propose that you build a building on that fire department site, taking advantage of the property we have, not using an additional property on another site. Use what we have, basically, we can provide any amount of square footage, the joint group decides we need, whether that's five thousand or ten thousand, that can be done on that site. It's proposed to be able to do that. I think if you imagine a little farther in the future, you might see that the Sears building, that they call it the north, Kent's building, it's not going to be there forever. It's not as old as this building is, it's not the condition it should be. And at some point, that's going to be removed. Uh, you can imagine a little farther that the addition that we make to this building, you can have a future potential front door that really faced Washington Street and Morgan County area. So that's a little farther in your imagination to go, but I think you need to consider that we should remove the fireplace bays, the fire department bays. It's roughly half the square footage of this building is being unused. Not proposed to be well-used in the options that you're looking at, so I think we need to consider that as well. And I'd love to report back to you, I have the historic society, they're coming down this Wednesday for another meeting and we'll see what they say about it all as well.
Gary, I'm sorry, did you say you submitted those in here or you have or haven't?
Uh, there was a package in there.
Oh, I'm sorry, seconded that here.
Ben, I guess the question is really for you on the discussion. Do you think the clerk and the clerk staff can facilitate responsibilities that you do on a day-to-day basis and have the storage you need in the current space that's currently the police department?
Um, every, every drawing that we've received or gotten with City Hall has included some type of addition to facilitate that. So, I mean, if, if that's what we're proposing, yeah, I think that would work. But having said that, we haven't really had anyone really dig deep into the removal of the garage also, so, to be fair.
I think one of the things we want to start discussion on is which way the council would really like to see us go because to have somebody come in and look at the structural of the fire station walls and take that off, that, that's going to cost some money to do that. So every time we have an architect come in here to look at something or whatever, it's going to cost.
going to cost money. So we need direction on what the council wants to do, because we want to spend money over here on something that we really don't want to do. Knowing that you can't really make a sound decision until you know what the cost is going to be, understand that, but we need some, some direction.
I know I've put that request out, there's been a couple of different plans that Councilmen are just going to look at. I don't know that I've come up with the exact one yet, I know we've been looking at everything. I think it's important to also look at the one you presented as well. I don't know if the council's ready to give that one tonight, or?
We've kind of at least opened the door, I'm starting discussion. So if, again, depending on what the council wants to do, we can table this discussion bringing up next meeting, that'll give you two weeks to look through things, come over, come to City Hall and walk through, kind of get an idea of what, what we have, or what could be here. And maybe go down to Ben's office and see, you know, what facilities they're going to... Because, you know, again, we had our workshop, and we said, you know, we knew we wouldn't make a decision tonight, but we've got to take the public stance of now we're, we're starting to talk about it.
How much square footage was you talking about, Gary?
Sorry?
How much square footage were you talking about in the firebays?
On that site, there could easily be 5,000 square footage.
That's not taking the alley, though, right?
Yeah, that, that building is 53 feet wide, this is 62, so it's about, it's pretty much smaller than this building is.
Gary, does adding that addition on to the, to the existing structure, does that change the amount of compliance cost to get this, because it's a higher square footage, and I know?
In discussion with historical people, who would replicate the exterior of this building?
The compliance, so for like ADA and different?
Yeah, and if you look back at even the DLZ study, and looked, Andy showed with Art design, there's no question this building needs a lot of work. There's a lot of detail in the DLZ, work with the structural condition, mechanical, ethical, so all those. And if we take off that 45% of the building, that's not be remediated and we're going to do, and what we could do is while that building is built, we don't have to relocate anybody. Altogether, we're going to be relocating this thing and shuffling personnel at some point. That building could be finished. The six, seven occupants that we have in this building could go into that temporarily until this building is remodeled. Then Ben's people will dump into the new building, as I was per se, this building is finished then at that point, so the shuffling is immediate, it's not, it's not nearly as bad that way if you follow that along the sequence.
Ben, the ADA question, every place that the public needs to have access in the original portion of the building is ADA compliant. Where ADA compliant, what's not is the fire bay area. And like you said, when it's rebuilt, it's brand new, and it will be totally up to speed.
Any addition would be a second elevator, that's reported.
So we would require a second elevator? We would require a second elevator?
For the new part, actually. For the new part, right?
Yes.
Not, not this part.
Is that cost reflected in this document?
I don't think these numbers reflect what I say accurately, what I, what I saw back in there, even their total was $6 million, and that was 2019. And 22, we experienced in construction, 14% increase. I mean, so six is not a real number.
You could probably build a new building for what you have in cash. The question is, what are we going to do with the original? And to be honest with you, Mayor, I don't, there's some things that have to be done, but I don't think you have to go crazy on the older version. It's, it's functional now, there's some things that have, we've got some boas and worms. Some things need to be addressed. Love to have new windows. These windows are dated, they let here, and they're not real efficient. There's things that need to be done. The main focus needs to be on getting him into a new office that's functional.
And you may not realize, we're on our seventh new building since this administration came in, you probably can't list four of the seven, but there've been a lot going on. I've done three historic remodels, so I'm not afraid to tackle something like that, but it's a matter of having the right contacts and right people, so that's fine. I'm certain we can all work together and make it happen. But let me encourage you to make it happen.
What was your statement about the Sears Building? Can you elaborate on that? You made a comment about the?
I had to trace it down to the Sears Building five years ago, almost, in 1985 then. The building's not fully occupied, I hear that. I see the last part is over there now. I agree with the historic society, came down to that, went, looked at their building in Kent City, oh, we're going to fix it all up, but looks the same today as it did five and a half years ago. That's never happened. This is the worst corner of this quarter, his building and the, what they call the Newberry Building, the Mike Building across the street on the other side of Washington Street, sits empty again now. So rehab of this corner needs to happen in the future, as I said.
Can you explain how that's relevant to the, like, why, why was that relevant to this, the master plan?
Why?
He's wanting to know, how does that tie into the remodeling of City Hall?
If we were remodeling City Hall, we could go in that direction, roughly 60 feet, that direction. There's an alley there, so we don't want to encompass our approach on it. His building on the other side, his building encompasses both what used to be, you saw the old Sanford, 1927 insurance maps, capital oil was there, so there's, it's probably a dirty site, to the best of our knowledge, the tanks have never moved, but that whole corner could be parked, could be additional parking, lot boxes available to us in there.
But Ben, it doesn't really, that's just futuristic.
Yeah.
To answer your question, it's nothing.
I'm just curious.
Unless you want to buy it.
So, Mr. Porter, I want to ask your direction here, since we had a motion, we had discussion. It sounds like we want to put this back on the agenda for the next meeting, so we have some time to think about it. Do we need a motion to do that, or we, can we just?
I think it would be appropriate to have a motion to table, just so that it's, it's clean in the record.
Okay. I make a motion that we table the motion, the previous motion and discussion until the next meeting regarding the municipal buildings, the future of the municipal?
If I, if I may, your original motion was, was fulfilled, so you don't have to amend that motion. It would be a motion to table consideration of how to move forward with municipal buildings would be the appropriate motion.
So are we moving forward by tabling the discussion, or just to have a clean slate at the next meeting?
Yeah, because you already fulfilled your motion to discuss.
All right. Then I make a motion that the previous motion has resolution, and that at the next meeting, we again bring up the municipal buildings' future.
We'll place it under unfinished business.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
There's been a motion made and seconded to take this discussion and table and bring it back up in our next meeting, paraphrasing the motion.
Thank you.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. And thank you, counsel, for being willing to discuss this and start the journey.
May I ask Mr. Porter a question? Are we allowed to discuss this now in public with one another?
As long as there's not more than four of you, either.
Okay, so we can kind of see where we want to go and talk with, can we talk with our constituents also?
I have a question, you're doing email exchanges because that constitutes a serial meeting, and that also is going to open the door.
When, when you do that, you address it to one at a time, don't, don't four at all, or give me a call.
But we can talk with our constituents also?
Absolutely.
And then you look in the, in the O manual, they explain serial meeting delivery, they give you a certification on that, central chapter.
I understand that part, kind of.
And I'm sure that now we've kind of opened the can, and want to be in the radio and the newspaper, that you'll start getting some phone calls.
Which we hope we hear.
And we know what, what the public wants. So, any other items on this topic? Moving forward, Judge Pete?
I, I do have one.
Wait just a second.
I'm sorry, just as we're discussing for the next two weeks, is there an amount for a new building? Do we have an amount of what we think it'll be using the prior estimates that we've gotten? Do we have a projected inflated amount that if we build a new building for the clerk's office out in the area where the investigators were previously, the police, I know that was one of the options, do we have, I mean, is it just, are the materials, are those current with the prices?
There are rest?
What they're looking for is direction on where to go, because you may have a decision how you want to live there, they can't give you actual, actual prices.
Ben's got some, he's got some estimates.
Yeah, there are some estimates that are in there that, that build-in inflation now, again, to be fair, the new building on there includes the utility office, so we would have to adjust the square footage on that.
All right, thank you.
Now, Judge Pete?
These matters, this is Mark Pete, Judge Mark Del Seque, these papers are matters which we thought you'd be interested to see in relation to duties performed by the clerk of the court on a normal basis. As you can see, they're quite varied and significant. What we are asking is that the council approve the amendment to the salary ordinance, amending that number of hours that she used to be authorized to work from 29 to 35, 35 hours a week, which we've made the court up and running for business on Fridays. There's been some suggestion in recent weeks that that might be appropriate, so that would be your decision to make if you want to expand the office hours of the court to include Fridays or not. The current allotment is 29 hours, which of course is part-time, and, and the court has operated on that basis for some time now.
For a long time, in fact.
And so go from 40, from 29 hours allotted, which is basically four days a week, to 35 hours, which would be five days a week. And we're, we're showing you also the pamphlet that is given to each unfortunate defendant stopped for a motor violation. That sets forth the hours of the court that have been closed on Friday. So we say in our usual arrogant way that the motor is enough to be deterred by the fact that it's part-time court. However, you can make a full-time court if you wish by amending the ordinance to provide for 35 hours instead of the current 29. Well, as we say on our pamphlet that goes to each unfortunate defendant, we're not available at their behest. They're available, and we're open. We set the hours that we're open, which currently is Monday through Thursday, as you can see from the pamphlet.
Thank you, Judge, for bringing this to the city council. Obviously, we want to take care of the public needs. Ben, I was wondering?
We need to discuss the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to do what? Judge, what, what you're proposing, does your budget support that increase?
Again, we're getting into discussion without a motion.
If I want, should come as a motion to discuss city court.
Or motion to do, like, judge, a question, but second, then we can discuss it, and we can back and vote either for or against that motion.
Here again, just because you make a motion doesn't mean you're supporting it, we're just wanting to have discussion.
Correct.
Are you saying we cannot have an open discussion?
Not without a motion.
Huh.
It's under Robert's rules. You doubt, the council doubt that I can do this.
The other thing you have to consider also is that if, if you're going to make a motion to amend the salary ordinance, you can't do that tonight. I mean, you can, you can direct that that's what you want to do, but we'd have to have a public meeting, and then we'd have to have that brought to a vote in the rule of amended salary ordinance. So you can't do it tonight, but certainly can make a motion to discuss.
Yeah, we, this is not a, you know, a thing, it's an emergency basis, we can defer until later if you wish.
Well, I'll make the motion to discuss under new business, item D, consideration of city court request. Judge?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Been a motion made and seconded to discuss the consideration of the city court request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Judge, back to my question, does your budget support this increase in hours to your office?
No.
Okay.
It was cut during 2024 when you were preparing for the 2025 budget. The office was reduced from 69 hours a week to 29 hours a week. And so that's, we honestly don't know how the budget would, came up because we weren't privy to it before it was presented and passed.
So a drop from 69 to 29?
Yes, sir.
And you're wanting to go to 35?
35.
Great.
Yes.
And then that 35, if you raise that to 35 hours, what does that do for the hours availability of the public to the city court?
Excuse me?
What, what will it do to the hours of availability to the public for a city court?
And it include Fridays?
Yes, the judge and I discussed that I'm willing to, I'm willing to work Fridays. That's not a problem for me, it's just that on Thursday afternoon, I'm out of time. With the exception of the last two weeks, I've had a family emergency the last two weeks, so please take that into consideration.
I'm sorry, did you have?
I think yours intertwined with mine, so I think we're satisfied with that. And Les, Ben, do you have any other financial data that would shed light on clarification?
Well, I guess I'm a little unclear on the request. On the 29 to 35 hours, that would constitute, constitute changing that position from part-time to full-time. So I'm assuming that we're including benefits and for things like insurance, things like that.
Yes, sir.